...shortens the crosswalk distance. So your kids are spending a shorter amount of time in the street and it forces a slower turn movement of cars.
And so far, the response has been great.
We really appreciate that they changed the street rain yesterday and today because there was too much traffic.
Hopes are to implement these changes permanently within a year.
Featured elements in this pop-up were based upon a walk-safety assessment that was held with the school community in 2017. It's a City of L.A. campaign that puts young people on the right track by helping them prepare for jobs, learn budgeting, and other valuable skills for the working world. We visited one Higher L.A.'s youth event.
This is the kickoff event for the Higher L.A. campaign and it is to allow young people to have work experiences and opportunities to build skills that'll last them a lifetime.
This program has been like a second family to me. I started Higher L.A. when I was 14-years-old. I was able to get my first job experience, which is something that not many people are willing to give a 14-year-old.
My daughter is seeking a job, which I think is a great opportunity for her to learn responsibility. And I do want to thank the mayor, Mayor Garcetti, amen, for this opportunity.
Trying to accomplish what I wanted to do, which was get a summer job. Start working during the summer so I can save up for the future plans and everything. You know, everybody else has money in their pocket, why not me?
She's gonna learn, you know, how to save money. And at this age, it's very important that they learn those skills on budgeting and what actually things cost.
This gives them opportunity to see what it's like to get out there and earn an honest paycheck and realize their dreams, hopefully.
Throughout my whole experience being in the program, I have always been going through something really major that could have made me fall and not get back up. But because of the help of mentors and this program, they helped me get back up and they saw potential in me before I ever did. We are the future of this country. We are the future of the world. And so just letting us in at such a young age, it really helps us build ourselves.
It's a new day for LGBT people at risk of homelessness. A new two-acre, $141 million campus has opened, a safe haven for people with similar experiences, though generations apart.
We pay a visit to the Los Angeles LGBT Center's newest digs. Welcome to the Anita May Rosenstein Campus in Hollywood, designed to help the most vulnerable of LGBT people. We're talking seniors and youth.
Nothing like this at this scale has ever been done in the LGBT community anywhere in the world.
Chief of Staff Daryl Cummings mentions the 100 new beds for homeless young people. Also, the Harry and Jeanette Weinberg Senior Center staffers say it will host over 100 events per month. Area Councilman David Rue stops by on National LGBT Elders' Day.
The population that has outperformed every other population of people becoming homeless have been seniors. But in the LGBT community, LGBT seniors are even more isolated and often, more than not, don't have family members or children.
But at the center, they have each other.
I really like being able to have my own community where people always understand because we have similar stories. Many of us lost our family of origin and made new families and they're here.
It's the first time I've sat down here in this space here and I've just met somebody and just having a delightful conversation. It's just great to have this little meeting spot.
The entire campus is two acres. Total cost: over $141 million. There's also a full kitchen with a 12-week cooking class.
They learn how to cut vegetables, they learn how to cook vegetables, all the way up to filleting fish and butchering chicken. Then they go and start making the meals for the center. So we do about 400 meals.
And the point of this eventually is to hopefully have them cook at restaurants.
Absolutely. So the third part of the program is that we place them in restaurants for internship.
And that is all in just Phase 1 of the project. Phase 2 is expected to bring some 99 units of affordable housing for seniors, plus 25 units of supportive housing for young people. Expected completion date on Phase 2 is mid-2020.
So we're right outside on our rooftop deck and we're overlooking our new senior housing that we're in the process of being built. It's Phase 2 of our Anita May Rosenstein Campus.
It makes good sense to have seniors and young people mingling.
Absolutely. Yeah, the whole concept of the campus itself is to connect our transition-age youth, 18 to 24, with our seniors. In the LGBT community, many youth are disconnected from their families, so our seniors can provide a mentoring role of connecting with them and helping them to understand how their sexual identity is part of who they are.
There's people out there that are trying to build a wall to keep vulnerable people out. We've built this to invite those people in. And we think that's better and we're very proud of what that represents.
The new campus will serve as the LGBT Center's flagship facility. The original center will be transformed entirely into a health center. The next time there's an earthquake or fire, will you be ready? Well, that's the hope, as L.A. City Councilmember Mike Bonin recently hosted an evacuation drill in his district to make sure residents are prepared.
Everybody talks about being prepared for an emergency. Are you prepared?
I'm only half-prepared, I would say. We have some stuff, some bags, some water. We don't have everything.
Well, today we have a large-scale evacuation drill for the residents of Mandeville Canyon to be prepared in the event of an inevitable brush fire. So there's some unique challenges in this area when you have large fire apparatus coming up, a small canyon road, and people trying to evacuate out. And so what we're doing is simulating a wind-driven fire, like a Santa Ana wind conditions that would start north of Mandeville Canyon and Stone Canyon and come towards this area.
Doing an evacuation drill here in this neighborhood is absolutely essential. It is one of the neighborhoods that is most at risk of a wildfire. There are limited ingress and egress from this neighborhood. Mandeville Canyon is a long, winding road with no other way out.
I think it's absolutely necessary. I think everybody who live in Canyon should be here. If you look at the fires that we've had up north and how the people have suffered from that, there's no reason for people not to be here.
People should be here because the people who don't know can create problems for people who do and be in the way instead of being part of the solution.
Being able to test out again and again how to do an evacuation, what works and what doesn't, and how to engage folks best and notify them and get them to participate is absolutely essential.
We're gonna just do the exact drill as if it's the real thing and do the best that we can so we can learn from it, debrief, and become better.
Are you ready?
Well, I think that we can always be more ready.
Good Samaritan Hospital hosts an annual blessing to raise awareness about bike safety. And as Gil Reyes reports, a special L.A. City Fire Department team is honored for their service.
Children on tricycles and their parents are among the folks gathered outside Good Samaritan Hospital in Westlake for the 16th Annual Blessing of the Bicycles.
We have a whole community of cyclists and that's what you have to do, is you have to bring people together. We're working to bring about awareness, to just share the road. Motorists to just be aware of turning, looking in their side mirrors to look for cyclists.
Hospital CEO Andy Leica hosts this multi-denominational service, a safety blessing for cyclists and their bikes before they hit the road.
Perhaps a little prayer before every ride isn't such a bad idea. Last year, the Department of Transportation says 21 bicyclists were killed on L.A. city streets in vehicle-related accidents. That's tied for the highest number since 2003.
Mayor Garcetti's proposed budget sets aside $117 million for traffic and safety improvements. You know who else rides? The L.A. City Fire Department Bike Medics. They received this year's Golden Spoke Award for Safety from the hospital.
We have a full-time team at Los Angeles International Airport where there are seven days a week, 20 hours a day, and they provide EMS support to the fire companies around the airport.
Are able to get anywhere in LAX in approximately 2 to 2 and 1/2 minutes. That's about 6 minutes faster than any fire engine or paramedic rescue.
And while the nearly 200-membered bike team is saving lives, the medics follow the same rules of the road as these kids, just ask their moms.
We tell them to be safe, to make sure that they wear their helmets and that they're conscious of where they're going.
Mayor Garcetti's Vision Zero Plan aims to eliminate all traffic deaths in L.A. City by 2025. Thousands of Angelenos came together in solidarity to mark Israel's 71st Independence Day and to celebrate the Israeli spirit with lots of entertainment, food, and family.
We are here in Rancho Park for the incredible Celebrate Israel Festival for the 75th anniversary of the State of Israel. And we are in Los Angeles, which has the largest population of Israelis outside of Israel.
Trying to educate the entire community, even beyond our own immediate community, about how rich the history of the Jewish people are.
We have a lot of booths from different organizations that are supportive of Israel, a lot of elected officials and notable community leaders, and it's just a great celebration of the State of Israel.
We personally feel this is our gift to the community, to be able to have the community come together in the park, in a place that so much resembles Israel.
To be surrounded by so much love and passion for my home country and just to see people so excited about it and to celebrate it, which is what this is.
The miraculous creation of a State of Israel is something that is a celebration not only for Israelis but for Americans as well.
It's an annual tradition that brings families out on the water to experience the L.A. harbor in a whole new light. The Port of L.A. hosted free boat tours to mark World Trade Week, and we climbed onboard.
Today, the Port of Los Angeles is hosting its annual free harbor boat tours in honor of World Trade Week. We host them every year, the Saturday after Mother's Day. We get about 2,000 visitors come down to the port and we have them boat tours in two locations, Wilmington and San Pedro.
Well, I brought my family down to the waterfront here in Wilmington because I never want to miss a chance to show people what a fantastic place the Port of L.A. is. There's so much going on here that's good for the region, good for the city, good for the country, and good for us locals.
The port is probably one of the largest employers. Somewhere, some way, everyone's job is kind of connected back to the Port of Los Angeles. So it's always nice to know where your items come from, your clothes, your shoes, your television sets, your easy chairs, and even your cars.
What do you get when you mix opera and mariachi? Well, you get an incredible fusion of sound and culture that's music to the ears.
Today, we're having what I think is a perfect L.A. day. We're here at the heart of old Los Angeles, El Pueblo de Los Angeles. This is, I think, our fifth year of bringing L.A. opera artists, our community performers who are part of the Zarzuela Project, together with the Mariachi Conservatory and Mariachi Boz de América to create this extraordinary kind of fusion of music.
Even though we are two different music genres in music, we're coming together and performing and giving a free concert for our community here in Plaza de Albera. It would be wonderful for us to be able to have our community, or my community, you know, be able to be more exposed into Zarzuela music. And with mariachi accompanying the Zarzuela singers, you know, that just kind of brings a little bit of the Mexican player to the Zarzuela.
The streets around Hollywood High School just got a lot safer. City leaders come together to keep Los Angeles beautiful. And signs marking athletic championships are unveiled at Sierra Canyon High School. All this in City Beat. Sierra Canyon makes history. Porter Ranch's Sierra Canyon School, normally known for its academic achievements, has scored big on the athletic side, too. The school's boys and girls basketball teams have both cinched the state championships for 2019, a first in California state history. Congratulations, Sierra. Up at Hollywood High School, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell cut the ribbon on the installation of new state-of-the-art pedestrian lights. Pedestrian safety has been a longtime priority for O'Farrell for very personal reasons.
Just about a block and a half away from where I lived in 1982, when I had my first apartment, and I would jog around the track at Hollywood High. I always believed in Hollywood, and I do to this day.
And at City Hall, 400 attendees shared ideas and inspiration at the Second Annual Beautification Conference. Focused on creating a greener, more sustainable Los Angeles, the conference both welcomes and empowers local residents and communities who share this brighter vision of tomorrow. The Health and Garden Expo, hosted by A Place Called Home, gave community members lessons on being healthy, from new recipes to learning about cultural events.
This is our annual Health and Garden Expo. This is an opportunity for us to share with the community ways to get healthy, eat healthy, learn how to grow a garden, you know, organic vegetables, learn recipes, and then also be exposed to various kinds of cultural events and ways to, you know, take responsibility for their own well-being. A Place Called Home is an oasis here in south-central L.A. And every day, we're serving young people from 8 years old into their 20s with help for education, the arts, mental health counseling, nutrition, athletics, and a pathway to college or a good job.
It's a place where kids can really be creative. They have an amazing multimedia space and an art space.
Anybody that comes here, it intrigues you. It makes you want to come back. It doesn't like, you don't come here and just be like, wow, this is another like organization. You're like, whoa, this is actually somewhere I can call home. This is a place that I can actually call home.
We were thrilled to be, and honored to be a part of this event. It's just fabulous.
Do you love animals? Then help celebrate National Animal Rights Day. Take part in the biggest family party of the summer and come out for a classic car show to benefit a good cause. All this and things to do. Sunday, June 2, is National Animal Rights Day in Los Angeles. Join the nonprofit March of Silence as they enlist artists, influencers, sanctuaries, and animal rescuers in their mission to end animal cruelty and exploitation. National Animal Rights Day L.A. kicks off on the north lawn of Pan Pacific Park located at 7600 Beverly Boulevard. The event takes place on June 2 from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For details, visit thenard.org. It's the family event of the summer. The SoCal Moms Great Big Family Play Day returns for the sixth year. This party of the summer features all-day live entertainment, interactive experiences for kids of all ages, food, big raffles, and more. Don't miss this chance to have big-time fun with the entire family at the SoCal Moms Great Big Family Play Day, happening Sunday, June 2, beginning at 9:00 a.m. The party gets started at the Autry at Griffith Park, located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. For tickets and details, visit socalmoms.com. Get your motor running for the right cause. Join LAFD and LAPD for the 16th Annual Still Saving Lives Car Show. This event is part Safety Fair, part live auto auction with displays, demonstrations, and a raffle. Proceeds from the event will benefit the Widows, Orphans, and Disabled Firemen's Fund. Admission is free to attend, so swing by the Still Saving Lives Car Show, happening Saturday, June 1 at Warner Center Park, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For details, visit vtac-vtd.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
If everybody would please take their seat, please take your seat. Today, today is Friday, May 31st. I want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves. Mr. Smith seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weesar moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue. Item three to June 11th, 2019.
Okay, so ordered unless there's an objection. Continue, please.
Item one through seven are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item seven has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, continue.
Items eight and nine are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Mr. President, there is no action required for item number eight inasmuch as the matter was adopted on Wednesday, May 29th, and there is no action required for item number nine inasmuch as the mayor approved the budget on May 30th, yesterday, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that brings us where, or continue?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items, to public comment, presentations.
So I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
I am so honored to stand here today for the first official kickoff of LGBT Pride Heritage Month, which begins tomorrow.
All right.
Every year, the city celebrates LGBT Heritage Month the Friday before the Christopher Street West Pride festivities. Los Angeles is host to a variety of pride events throughout the month of June. A few of them include: June 6th, the Hollywood Museum will open the Real-to-Real exhibit, which my office cosponsors. It's an informative retrospective of LGBTQ images in film, TV, and new digital platforms. If there are any fans of RuPaul's Drag Race here, listening or seeing this, we will have Nina West's costume from her last performance on season 11. L.A. Pride, which begins on June 7th and ends on June 9th with a parade and festival. On June 12th, Councilmember Mike Bonin, who is out of town today, will host this city's official LGBT Heritage Month celebration right here in City Council chambers. Also, on June 12th, the City Hall Bridge Gallery exhibit, True Colors: Pride Flags Celebrating Queer Identity. Our Pride in South LA is on June 14th, hosted by Councilmembers, you, Mr. President, Herb Wesson, and Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson. Valley Pride is June 22nd, and hosted by Councilwoman Nuri Martinez. And tonight, Mayor Eric Garcetti will illuminate City Hall in the rainbow colors, which will be brilliantly visible from tonight's Dodger Stadium Pride Night. And that is today. So you can tell, we have a lot of things, we're going to be very busy in the month of June, I'm already exhausted just thinking about it, but in a great way, because today we're here for a very special reason. In these divisive times and in such a progressive city, it may be easy to forget that our community is growing and changing. One of the ways we are changing is with the concept of queer identity. A UCLA study in 2017 showed that 27% of California adolescents ages 12 to 17 say they are viewed as gender nonconforming at their school. 27%. So what does that do for us? People make assumptions about the gender of another person based on the person's appearance or their name. These assumptions aren't always correct, and the act of making an assumption, even if correct, sends a potentially harmful message that people have to look a certain way to demonstrate the gender that they are or are not. And one thing this community hates is being put into a box and limited in who we identify with and how we identify, and if we are expected to not be our authentic selves. Using someone's correct personal pronouns is a way to respect how they identify, acknowledges their true nature, and creates an inclusive environment, just as using a person's name can be a way to respect them. Just as it can be offensive or even harassing to make up a nickname for someone and call them that nickname against their will, it can be offensive or harassing and dehumanizing to guess at someone's pronouns and refer to them using those pronouns if that is not how that person identifies and wants to be known. It's about respect. Or worse, actively choosing to ignore the pronouns someone has stated that they go by could imply the oppressive notion that intersex, transgender, non-binary, and gender nonconforming people do not or should not exist. Before I get to our incredible ambassador of LGBT Heritage Month, Nico Tortorella, I want to invite a friend to say a few words. The last several years, the Los Angeles Police Department has come so far, they are part of this community, supportive of this community, and one of their initiatives really builds in the relationship and collaboration with the LGBT community. Many transgendered and lesbians and gay men are on the force, and that's not going to change anytime soon. So to say a few words about that initiative is LAPD Commander Gerald Woodyearne.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
It's good to see you. I will be extremely brief. Councilmember O'Farrell, and to the distinguished board, I just wanted to say that the LGBTQ community is extremely important to the LAPD Police Department. So I just wanted to say, I'm a big fan of Nico, and my wife is envious that I'm up here to honor someone that means so much to that community. So on behalf of the department, on behalf of Chief Moore, and on behalf of Chief Girmalla, we want to say congratulations on the Nico Tortorelli Day. Sorry, I'm nervous when I'm around greatness. But with that being said, we are going to remain committed to the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander. Thank you so much, Commander. So, who are you honoring today as a trailblazer in queer identity? Nico Tortorella has been at the forefront of fostering acceptance and educating the public on this topic. They use their celebrity to raise the profile of gender fluidity. They currently can be seen on the hit TV show Younger on TV Land. And what do you have, like a million hits and a million fans on your Instagram, probably?
Quite there, yeah.
Not quite there, almost, almost. Their other credits include the film Scream 4 and the Fox TV drama The Following. As part of their advocacy work, Nico has appeared on The View. I bet that was a lively conversation.
Yeah, it really was.
Let's take a look at the video.
There's a new sexual revolution happening right now that challenges everything you thought you knew, and it can be hard to wrap your brain around. So I set out to find some answers. Take a look. In the past few years, there's been a growing national discussion about gender identity, from celebrities like Caitlyn Jenner coming out as transgender, to lawmakers debating the so-called bathroom bill. With more than 70 labels to identify gender on Facebook, it's clear that the younger generation is rejecting old labels, even when it comes to sexuality. Actress Kiki Palmer says she wants to shed the labels.
Many people have tried to label me as gay, or this, or that, and I'm like, you know, I just like whatever I like whenever I like it.
Other celebrities like Bella Thorne have come out as bisexual, and Nico Tortorella, star of the hit show Younger, explores sexual fluidity on his eye-opening podcast.
Both you and I have dated men, have dated women. That's not being bisexual, and I don't know what is.
So Nico and I went to the LGBT Community Center in New York City to talk with six young adults. This was a really eye-opening discussion, but things got really interesting when we talked about how being sexually fluid works in a relationship. Take a look. I want to talk a little bit about dating now. First of all, when you guys are dating someone and you're getting to know them, how much do you share right away?
I kind of just casually say it in conversation. Like, if there's a conversation where we talk about past relationships, I'll be like, yeah, I had an ex-boyfriend, yeah, an ex-girlfriend, oh, so you're bisexual, yeah, okay. And so it's kind of easy.
And for the most part, we're not dating people that don't understand, you know what I mean? Like, that's not really an option for me. I'm not going to go date somebody that doesn't want to be.
But like, you're attractive, and if I met you in a bar, I'm not like you. Like, I do pursue a monogamous relationship, but I wouldn't know that unless you said...
I would open the conversation with being polyamorous, you know, like, I...
That comes out right away, like, hey, what are you drinking? I love everyone. Like, literally play out how you would introduce. I think you're cute, let's get a drink sometime. How does this evolve? How do you identify this girl may be a little pent up, she doesn't know, like, I've got a lot to share with her?
I mean, I would know pretty, pretty quickly.
What?
How conservative you are.
I'm not conservative!
Or not, and whether or not it would even be an option.
How can you tell right now? Wait, can you guys tell?
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, can you go back to hitting on me and trying to tell me you love everyone?
So if I, so if I told you I was a bisexual, would that change something for you?
I think I'd be intrigued. I've been with women that are, would identify as both, but that's more comfortable for me.
Because it's more socially acceptable for a woman to be a bisexual than it is for a man to be bisexual.
I understood them more as women than I do a man sexual at all.
Why do you think that is? Why do you think it's more socially acceptable for women to be bisexual than it is for men?
Because people like to fetishize women.
But interestingly enough, I have the same, I shared this with Nico, I have the same stereotype. I am very open to a woman who says she's bisexual. I'm like, oh, I get it, girl, like, you know, and I think of a spectrum, and when a man says that, I'm like, so you're gay. I have a really hard time. It's my own hangup, and I know it's a double standard, but I don't know why my brain goes there.
I think that just all comes back to toxic masculinity.
Yes.
Just the idea that men have to be very masculine, very aggressive.
Nico Tortorella is a Renaissance human for the modern day, an actor, author, and advocate for the LGBTQIA community, breaking down stereotypes and educating in the process. Nico was claiming space not only for themselves, but all those who identify as gender fluid, and through their success, building a strong foundation of acceptance. So how wonderful is it that Nico makes it possible that we don't have to fit into anyone's category of who we are? That's so limiting, and isn't it also wonderful that when we open up our minds about how people identify, it brings all of us on a common ground? Because this is a universal human feeling across all classes and races and demographics. If that is not a unifying theme for LGBT Heritage Month, I don't know what is. So, I would like to introduce our LGBT Heritage Ambassador, Nico Tortorella, to share their remarks.
Let's give Nico a round of applause, and Nico, we look forward to seeing you next week on Lip Sync, I think it is.
Yes.
So I want to be checking you out.
I appreciate that, thank you, thank you. This is utterly surreal. I am so honored and humbled, grateful and proud, and honestly, there will never be enough words to describe this, this feeling. LGBT Heritage Month Ambassador, Nico Tortorella Day, like, what? Thank you, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, City Councillor, City Controller Ron Galperin, Councilmember Mike Bonin, Mayor Eric Garcetti, and esteemed council members, thank you for all showing up to continuously do the work. And thank you, Los Angeles, truly a city of angels. I lived here for years, my career, my entire livelihood was born on this dirt, and this is the ultimate validation that I am indeed still on the right path. But this isn't just for me, this day is not just for me, this is for the people that I'm standing here today for. For anyone that has ever questioned their place, their worth, their identity, sexuality, gender, expression, or faith. For the marginalized and the disenfranchised, for anyone who has ever been made to feel other. For the people who are more deserving to be standing in front of you right now but will never have that opportunity. And for our elders and our ancestors who made this world possible, even in its flaws. For all of them, for them, for they, them, for me and them. When asked if my pronouns are plural, I say yes. I am a multi, I am a multi-dimensional, dynamic human being who contains multitudes, and that is a responsibility that we all are capable of carrying. My queer journey has shown me that, that gender, that humanity is multivalent and continuous. Not two opposing poles, but a nuanced spectrum along which we have the freedom to explore the space between. And my own queerness came into being not just from meeting other queer people, but because everyone in this world has been a queer figure to some degree. There is always something off-kilter about people. No one perfectly fits these tropes and these archetypes that we put on pedestals. And because of this, what I am most interested in now is leveraging it all for the greater good. Be every human. My call to action is this, Los Angeles, as much as we are aware of the victim that is in all of us, we must also acknowledge the ways in which we are complicit. Just because you are being strangled doesn't mean your hands aren't wrapped around someone else's neck. If you see something, say something. If you have a body that is deemed more socially acceptable than others, stand up for the ones in need. If you are white, scream against systemic racism. If you are an American citizen, stand up for the undocumented, stand up for the indigenous, the homeless, the incarcerated, the poor, the black, the brown, the queer, the trans, the you, the me, the all of us. Include us all in these conversations, love all. All of it really is you. The space between everything, all love, it is you. And thank you again. Amen. All right, so let this day, May 31st, 2019, be known across the city of Los Angeles as Nico Tortorella Day in the City of LA.
All right.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. This is both a great honor for me and a moment of some sadness, because I'm here to recognize a real pillar in my district and our community of the East San Fernando Valley, who's marking his retirement after a half-century of service to our community. Pastor Robert Bach has been leading, well, let me go back. Pastor Bach was born in South Bend, Indiana. He went to church, he went to college there, he went to divinity school, and in 1961, he moved out here to Hollywood. He began his career as Associate Minister at the Hollywood Beverly Christian Church, and then in 1969, at a time when many of the members here were not yet born, in the first year of the Richard Nixon administration, Pastor Bob came to North Hollywood and took over the leadership of the First Christian Church of North Hollywood. In his 50-year career of service to our community, Pastor Bob's encouragement of creative ideas and his empowerment of the dreams of his congregation and his neighbors and others in our community has been key to this church's growing and dynamic ministry and its role in our district. He's created countless community and church programs that have benefited the people of North Hollywood and beyond. Notably, in 1984, he began the Interfaith Food Pantry, which was founded by five interfaith congregations, including First Christian Church of North Hollywood. It has found its home there, and it has been a life-altering program, life-saving program in many respects for the people most in need in our area. Pastor Bob also created the Park Ministry, which prepares and serves fresh homemade food for homeless individuals in North Hollywood, again, manifesting really the true meaning of Christianity, while at the same time changing people's lives and keeping people, literally keeping people alive who would otherwise not be able to have a decent meal. Our office has partnered with Pastor Bob and the church in many ways that have been important to the community. Every year, for the last five years, we've had our holiday food and toy drive to help support the Food Pantry and to support families in need. In 2016, I hosted a community interfaith dialogue at the church regarding stopping violence and finding ways that the faith community could be more involved in stopping the violence, and of course, Pastor Bob was incredibly supportive of that effort. He's been a fixture not only in the church, but in community service more broadly. Los Angeles County Supervisor Ernest Debs appointed Pastor Bob to the Los Angeles County Board of Education, where he served for 16 years and became really a national advocate for public education. He traveled to the nation's capital many times to advocate and fight for people having more educational resources, and during that time, he was also asked to be the guest chaplain for both the United States Senate and the United States House of Representatives. Pastor Bob's been a leader in the church. He has been on the boards, or been a leader in the Christian Church Foundation, the National City Christian Church, the Board of Disciples Seminary Foundation, the Committee on Ministry of the Christian Church, Disciples of Christ in the Pacific Southwest Region. Really, he has been a model, faith leader, and community leader that all of us have loved and have benefited from his service, and we really, really will miss him. But Pastor Bob is also a, kind of a Los Angeles story, because it wasn't enough that he led this church. He knew that he had an extended ministry as well, and he had an opportunity to, to go beyond the walls of the church and provide inspiration to people in other ways as well. So for 40 years, he's been an active member of SAG-AFTRA. He's had a recurring cameo roles in three major daytime dramas, including The Young and the Restless, where he served as the resident pastor for 25 years. They even named the character after him. And in 2007, many of you will remember a movie called There Will Be Blood, not exactly a movie that manifested a lot of Christian values, but nonetheless, it was a winner of Academy Awards, and Pastor Bob performed in that motion picture. I don't think he was one of the Academy Award winners, but he performed tremendously as the minister in, in that film. So it's, it's with joy, but it's also with a tinge of sadness that I ask you to join me in honoring Pastor Bob for his incredible service to our community and wish him all the best on his retirement. Pastor Bob?
It's sort of dangerous to give a minister a microphone because we're used to having 20 minutes. So I just want to thank Councilman Krikorian, he has been very, very helpful to us in many, many ways in our ministry. His staff is always responsive, and I want to thank the City Council for inviting us here today. These are people from my congregation, my wife Peggy, and they came down to just be a part of this recognition. Councilman Krikorian mentioned our Interfaith Food Pantry. This was something that we take a lot of pride in, because it was 36 years ago, we had a vision that there was nothing being done for the homeless, and two Jewish congregations, reformed and orthodox, and three Christian churches got together and formed this pantry. There are now 14 congregations involved, and we're distributing food to about 600 people every Monday and every Friday. And Luis Olart, who served as the Director of the Pantry, is here today. It's one of the ministries that we are taking great pride in, and so I thank you for your support, and thank you for recognizing me today, and God bless you in your, in your work today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You guys in the back?
I decided not to retire, I had to go another four years, but that's all right, you don't need to talk about that.
That's, that's perfect. So... So news flash, it seems like Pastor Bob, after 50 years of service, has decided to stick around a little bit longer, and so he's continuing with the church. We've taken a moment to celebrate a half a century of service, but he's not quite done yet.
All right.
So eliminate everything I said about the sadness part. I'm overjoyed to find out.
Let's give him a round of applause.
He's going to be sticking around. All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Could be the first time I've seen you blush, Mr. Krikorian.
You know, after 50 years. So next, I'd like to invite up some people who have just similarly inspired the North Hollywood community. The North Hollywood High School Cyber Cup Team, so if you would please join me up here. This is North Hollywood Team Mendenhall, who, and you see they brought some hardware with them. North Hollywood High School, as you know, because I come up here a lot of times and present to their various teams, has been one of the extraordinary schools in all of Los Angeles and in fact, all of the country in various types of STEAM education. And when it comes to the Cyber Cup, they again have dominated California and the country. So the cyber defense teams at North Hollywood spend their time trying to figure out ways to prepare defenses to cyber attacks, things that all of us should be a lot more aware of than we are, both in government, in the private sector, and in our own homes. And these students do this not as part of their curriculum, not as part of their class, but in their spare time. After already enduring a grueling day of schoolwork, they participate in the Beyond the Bell program at North Hollywood High School, and in that, do this work as a Cyber Cup team. So North Hollywood's Team Mendenhall won the LA Regional Championship, and then they went on to place second in the National Cyber Patriot Competition among all teams in the entire United States of America when they went to Baltimore, Maryland, and again showed their extraordinary skill and ability. And I want to tell you a little bit about the path that they took to get there. So in the local competition, they beat out more than 274 participants from 36 teams from around the LA region. That gave them a position to be among the 12 finalist teams nationwide that were invited to the finals, out of a field of 6,387 cyber teams that registered to compete. During the competition, these students thwarted cyber attacks, protected the networks from malware or other threats to cybersecurity from hackers, and this team did it well enough that they placed second in the entire nation. So as I mentioned, this is an after-school program. These students spend hours and hours and hours of their time every week honing these skills. And think of how important this is, not just to them, but to our local economy, to the national economy as well. The need for experts in this area is great and growing. There are about 350,000 cybersecurity jobs open in the United States, and that number is only going to grow. So the work that these students are doing at North Hollywood High School is preparing them for incredibly well-paying careers that are going to be very important to all of our business community and to government as well. So just by way of background, North Hollywood High School brought home the Cyber Patriots National Championship title in 2014, 2017, and 2018. They were runners-up nationally in 2015 and 2019, this last year. So you can see, this is the team that every other high school team in the United States of America fears the most, the North Hollywood High School team.
All right.
So I want to bring up one of their fearsome members to speak for a moment. So if I can invite up Samuel Kazimirowicz to speak on behalf of the team. Sam?
So first of all, I'd like to thank, I mean, thank everyone for inviting us here. Thank Councilmember Krikorian for inviting us here. Krikorian, sorry. So yeah, this has been made possible, first of all, by after-school programs. This is all after-school, and it's honestly amazing how much we get supported and how much they sponsor us. So yeah, of course, as elected officials, you all probably are briefed a lot on cybersecurity, and especially, every year it gets more and more important, cybersecurity. We saw what happened with WannaCry with the NHS in England, and we saw even recently what happened in Baltimore. They got attacked by ransomware, and instead of paying for it, they decided to fight it, and there were people who couldn't buy houses, couldn't pay taxes, couldn't even access their email if they worked for the government, if they worked for the Baltimore, worked for Baltimore government. And so it's growing more and more important. As Councilmember Krikorian said, there are so, so many jobs available in cybersecurity now that this after-school program just opens up people's eyes to. Because you know, who's in high school and goes, oh yeah, I want to work in cybersecurity? Probably not a lot, but then, you know, after being in this program personally, I've been opened up to it and it's a serious job consideration now because I've learned not only, you know, oh yeah, it's fun, but I've learned how important it is in every day and on the big scale. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sam. And, Mr. President, if I could take just a moment, if the members of Team Mendenhall wouldn't mind coming up, could you just introduce yourself? Each of you, introduce yourself to the council and maybe tell us a little bit about what you have planned next?
Yeah, sure. So I'm.
Well, you already did.
Yeah, sure. I'm Samuel Kazimirowicz, and I hopefully gonna go into computer engineering at Cal Poly Sloan, hopefully work with computer security, cybersecurity after this, probably work in the artificial intelligence.
Could you step to the mic?
Sure.
Speak into the mic.
Oh yeah, there's a mic. I should probably speak into that. That's why it's there. But yeah, hopefully do cybersecurity and apply artificial intelligence to it, which sounds a lot of like gobbledygook, but I promise it's important.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lina Kim, and I'm going to be studying Energy Resources Engineering, which is renewable energy development at Stanford University next year.
Hi, I'm Glenn Housman. I'm graduating next week, and I will be studying computer science at Stanford University.
I'm Tom Panenko, and I'll be a computer engineering major in Boston in the fall.
Hello, my name is Joshua Cave, and I'm a freshman at North Hollywood, and I plan to continue with Cyber Patriots throughout my school years and hopefully get into networking.
Hi, I'm Louis Pang. I'm a junior at North Hollywood High School, and I plan to be back next year with Mr. Garringer doing this again.
And winning again. Very good. As I mentioned, this is a Beyond the Bell program, and you all know how important Beyond the Bell is in so many schools around our city. This is just one terrific example of the sorts of programs that Beyond the Bell provides. So I'd like to invite next Donna Woods from California Cyber Hub to come on up and tell us a little bit more about the program. Good to see you.
Thank you, good to see you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Krikorian, Mr. President, and distinguished council members in the room. If we can get your attention, please, I know there's a lot of sidebar conversations, but we are honored to be here, and it's extremely important. The students that you see behind me are just a small representative of thousands of students across the country, particularly those here in California, that represent a growing STEM field in cybersecurity. Every one of us in the room must be cyber-responsible individuals. From the apps on your phone that you're clearly using today, from law enforcement to securing data in our realtor sales and commerce, cyber is changing the economic landscape. For our students and the students I serve, I'm an academic pathway teacher, and I also serve as the Academic Relations Manager for the State of California for cybersecurity. These students, our goal is to make sure every student, including underrepresented student populations of every cultural and ethnic background, have an opportunity in the STEM career. We host the California Mayor's Cup absolutely free in all 12 regions across the state. We had over 1,300 students competing this year in California alone, 45 brand-new teams of every cultural and ethnic background. In each region, it costs us over $35,000 to put this on. The students competed, we ran everything in the cloud, we created the cyber competition and challenge with AWS, Amazon Web Services, and Cintec Global, and it was hosted by colleges and regions throughout the state. We could not do it without industry and academic partners. The students behind me again represent, in California nationally, 6,300 teams competing, 18 national champions, and I hope you hear this part clearly, of those 18 national champions, 15 national championship teams reside in California, 90% in Southern California. Southern California holds the three high school national champions and the three middle school national champions. Let's give them a hand. It's something to be very proud of. When I speak to the economic impact, I personally have students that are the first to attend college in their families. Many of my students have bought their families their first home to reside in. They're the first to go to college on full scholarship rides, and we ask all of our students in this program throughout the state of California to pay it forward. They return back as mentors. They teach the upcoming teams. We teach the small businesses. We go into our law enforcement and teach the law enforcement officers how to protect the apps and the devices, the computers they're on. We go into the medical in Kaiser and Loma Linda and teach them how to protect the data, the medical records data. Kaiser alone has 3 million clients just in Southern California. They must protect that data. Retail, your personal home devices, all your smart devices in your home from your appliances must be protected. This is what these students do, and they do it with great pride and resilience. I am so proud of their teachers, their advisors, the assembly members that recognize them. We have a great cybersecurity task force in Sacramento. They're recognized by their senators and assemblymen, and again, we're honored that you had us here today. You will get to keep the California Mayor's Trophy Cup for one year. It is a perpetual trophy. Unless North Hollywood wins it again next year, then it will return to you. So again, thank you. We are honored to be here today to represent all the teams throughout California, but particularly those in the Los Angeles basin. You have a great deal to be proud of. They are securing your city without even your knowledge, so you can sleep well.
Thank you, Donna.
Well, thank you, and good luck to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Donna, very much. And, Mr. President, we've already initiated an effort to connect some of the Team Mendenhall students with ITA as well, to see that perhaps the city can more directly benefit from some of their expertise as well. So hopefully that'll be the next step. And that cup, we expect to keep here in City Hall for many years to come as well. So I want to say a special thank you to the principal of North Hollywood High School, Mr. Rosales, and the great coach of this incredible team, Jay Garringer. And thank you all very, very much for being with us today. Congratulations.
Let's give a picture of the trophy, shall we?
Can you guys stand and take the trophy up to the council? And at this time, the team is going to be presenting the California Mayor's Cyber Cup Trophy to our city council members for photos, so if you'll come here with the team, please. Up there, up there.
All right, let's recess for a minute. Yeah.
Yes, can you go over to this side? Yeah, yes, no, sorry. Okay, okay, yeah, that's good. That's good, I can see.
At this time, why don't we move into the public comment section on our agenda? So sergeants, if you would remove the rope, and I want Joanna Aguilera, Teresa, Teresa Flanagan, please come forward. Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, council members. My name is Joanna Aguilera. I'm with ARMS of LA and supporting the project. We are especially excited about local hire component on this project because we have firsthand experience of the benefits of the local hire programs. Our members have secured jobs and careers in the construction industry. We hope that you give more members such an opportunity. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. If we could get April to come up, and then after April, we'll get Mr. Sacks.
Hi, my name is Teresa. I'm with ARMS of LA. We are in the midst of housing affordable crisis. At this time, we cannot afford to lose good-paying jobs and out more families in the pipeline of this property needed affordable housings. Protect the community, keep the jobs here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, give her a minute.
Hi, good morning. My name is April Papili, and I'm here today on behalf of ARMS of Los Angeles. The jobs the industry provides for many people of Los Angeles offers competing wages, quality healthcare, continued training, and reliable retirement programs. Don't put these benefits at risk for the families that need it most and work hard every day to maintain those opportunities. California has the strictest safety and environmental regulations in the nation, if not in the world, when it comes to oil and gas production. By keeping the industry here locally, we are able to follow and enforce these strict regulations. It's crucial we fight to keep the industry local and keep it safe. Thank you so much.
Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Previn.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Ross Sacks. For the record, it's too bad about the budget. Too bad you couldn't update the electronic machines. But anyway, for the record, Mr. Krikorian mentioned all these people coming to the budget hearings, and for the record, not one of them mentioned anything about the marijuana sales tax money and where it was going. But also for the record, the mayor wants a sustainable city, and this was hanging up the CEO's office about unplugging your cellphones and all this other bullshit. And at night, for the record, the DWP building, which is three blocks away on the other side of. And at night, for the record, the DWP building, which is three blocks away on the other side west of us, every freaking light in the building is lit up twenty-four, from eight PM until the morning, every light in the building. So much for a sustainable city. Maybe, Herbie, you could take the plug out of there and stick it somewhere else.
Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Please reset my time. I'll start speaking now.
Mr. Previn?
Yeah.
You better, you've only got forty-five seconds left.
Okay. You're in violation of the Brown Act on May twenty-third.
Mr. Previn, if you want to speak...
A general public comment. I'm allowed to say that, sir. And you're going to be sued from the May twenty-third event, and your behavior today can be simplified by simply showing the tiny size as we embrace that wonderful bisexual chap in living color, and all those kids from North Hollywood who are cyber-experts and know the difference between wrongdoing, which is what you preside over regularly. And to be clear, we're also going to get you for twenty-two-point-eight-one-nine, which is where people get into the Dem Neighborhood Council, you serve, you do a community impact statement, and you deny the extra time to actually speak to the public, to the council. And it's outrageous, and the detail about what you screwed it up on...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes general public comment. All right. Madam Clerk, what's before...
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted, and they are referred. No announcements, if all would plead... Mr. Weezer, did you have an announce?
Very motion.
All right, let's all rise. So, let me recognize Mr. Smith first. He has an announcement.
I just want to announce for the public that are watching that tonight begins the salute to recreation in the San Fernando Valley, takes place at North Ridge Park, starts off tonight with a senior dance, which is free to all senior citizens with a live band, and tomorrow is the traditional fair and activities at the park with rides and stuff for the kids. So, it's all for the public, North Ridge Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. adjourning motions, Mr. Wee, Mr. Sadea.
Colleagues, this is a adjourn in memory of a member of our city family. Every day, we're greeted by people when we come into the parking lot, and one of the kind of stalwarts of city culture here is, you know, a wave, a nod, a hello to Eddie Santillan. His uncle, Jose Santillan, passed away last month at the young age of ninety-one. Jose was born in nineteen-twenty-eight, and he grew up in my district, in the neighborhood around Chavez Ravine, which is now known as Dodger Stadium. He was educated at Roosevelt High School. He went to night school. And in nineteen-forty-seven, during that time period, he met the love of his life, Jenny Maldonado. They married in nineteen-fifty, and Jose and Jenny were married for an incredible sixty-nine years of incredible love and support. And during that time, they raised a daughter and a son, and then five grandchildren and six great-granddaughters. Jose was honorably discharged from the Army and served us up until nineteen-fifty-three. Like many in Southern California, he was part of building our economy in the post-war period. He worked at the Chrysler plant in Maywood, and for almost twenty years, starting in nineteen-seventy-one, he joined the LA Times, where he worked another twenty years. Don Jose is survived by his wife Jenny. We offer her our condolences to Jose's family and to our City Hall family member, Eddie Santillan.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Colleagues, and I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of two young brothers, Benigno Enrique Felix and Jesse Felix, both Zuniga brothers, who on May fifth tragically died in a hit-and-run crash in Highland Park. Benigno was only twenty-five, and Jesse was nineteen. With the passing of Benigno and Jesse, the neighborhood of Highland Park and the city of Los Angeles lost two promising and talented members of our communities with bright futures ahead of them. Though their lives were cut short, the impact they had is undeniable. The outpouring of support, empathy, and assistance that their community and friends, and even complete strangers gave, is testament to the enduring character of these two young and beloved brothers. Both brothers attended Sampa Escola Elementary, Luther Burbank Middle School, and Franklin High School in Highland Park. Benny, as Benigno was known, was a pillar in the community and a strong presence among friends, family, teachers, coaches, coworkers, and anyone who crossed his path. While at Franklin, Benny was an outstanding student-athlete who played varsity soccer and ran cross-country. His teammates and coaches remember him for passion, spirit, and enthusiasm he brought to the field of competition. What really stands out to his teammates, besides his golosos, Benny would score, or the competitive races he relished, was the leadership skills he shared with his teammates. Benny would fire up his teammates by giving prep talks that uplifted their spirits and encouraged them to do their best and give their all. Benny was a recent graduate from California State University Northridge, earning a bachelor's degree in finance. His young career was just getting started. He worked at Enterprise Rent-A-Car and received recognition for his excellent customer service and work ethic. His brother Jesse was a happy and friendly spirit, offering support, advice, or assistance to whoever needed it. Like his older brother, Jesse was an outstanding student-athlete who participated in basketball, cross-country, and track. Jesse was a sophomore at California State University of Los Angeles, where he was pursuing an engineering degree. He was out, he was an outstanding student with excellent grades. Not surprisingly, he earned recognition on the dean's honor list at Cal State LA. His friends and family will remember him for his outstanding work ethic. Although these two young brothers are no longer with us, their spirit will live on, in the hearts and minds of their family, friends, and the community of Highland Park. They will live on through their wonderful, hard-working, and dedicated parents, Benigno Felix and Lilia Zunica, and their loving girlfriends, Viviana and Marisol. Today, we honor Benny and Jesse, not for the lives they could have lived, and they clearly were preparing to do even greater things, but for the quality lives they managed to live in a short period on this earth. They were kind-hearted young men, role models in our community, and brothers who lit up any room they walked in. They were taken from us way too soon, and the community of Highland Park and all of us and their family members will miss them. May they rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, not an adjournment, but an announcement, and I just appreciate the opportunity to present it.
Hey, wait a minute. Mr. Herman, you are disrupting this meeting as we are ending it. So, Mr. Price, if you could make your announcements now would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just a sad announcement to make. It's always difficult when you lose a member of the city family. And so, we're just so proud to be thanking Brenda Contrares for her work and dedication. Brenda had the unique distinction of serving in the City Hall office as a communications assistant and in the district office as a deputy, and she performed well in each and every case, always willing to go the extra mile. Her spirit is contagious, and her willingness to share and give back is just really very special. So, Brenda, we're going to be missing you. We had a nice little impromptu lunch yesterday, and we made it very clear that she's going to always be a part of the Price family, but we want you to know, we appreciate you, Brenda. Congratulations. Keep up the good work in all your endeavors, and you will be missed.
Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you for your service, and good luck to you in the future. There are no further adjourning motions. Members, have a great weekend. This meeting is adjourned.